I'd like to call this meeting to order, executive meeting, July 1st, 2024. Can we take roll, please?
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
And Ms. Hart is absent, so you have seven.
Very good. At this time, we could all rise for a moment of silence for our chairman, Mr. Wayne Hilsinger. Mel, would you, I know you sent that out, but could you tell everybody where the...
Yes, so I believe I've sent it to everyone, but Mr. Hilsinger... Yes, so I believe I've sent it to everyone, but Mr. Hilsinger's...
Anything about Wayne is...
Memorial service will be July 28th, from 1:00 to 5:00. It's a Sunday afternoon at Schaefer Funeral Home. It's on Manchester, kind of in the Baldwin area, Baldwin Ellisville border.
Is that Schrader?
I believe that's what it's called.
Yes, that's correct.
I believe so. I'm just making sure it's Schrader and not Schaefer.
Okay.
Yeah, Schrader Family Center.
Anybody have anything to say?
I would like to say something.
Please.
Mr. Hilsinger has been and was a staple of this commission. He was appointed in September of 1999 to the planning commission, devoting a good quarter century of dedication and service to the betterment of residents and the betterment of the built environment. It is difficult and it is hard to sort of undersell how meaningful that work is to our community. And when you have people like Mr. Hilsinger who are willing to dedicate that much of themselves, I think it's something that behooves us to honor. And on a very personal level, Mr. Hilsinger was an absolute, he was humorous. He was very kind, even when he did not agree with staff's recommendation. He ensured that he let us know how much he valued our perspective and the work that we did. When I started at St. Louis County Government nine years ago, Mr. Hilsinger went out of his way to ensure that I felt very welcome as a staff planner to this commission. So I know that I am personally going to really miss Mr. Hilsinger's presence, but I'm deeply appreciative of everything that he has done for this department and for this county and for its people.
Thanks, Jacob. Wayne was a real gem, and he will really be missed. I wish he was here right now.
I think the main thing that Wayne brings to mind to me is respect. Wayne had respect for everyone. I mean, people out talking on a petition he may not agree with, he still respected them. He let them have their say, and respect goes a long way when, in, just in life in general.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. Meeting summaries, meeting minutes from Executive Meeting of June 3rd.
Motion for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and do the meeting minutes from public hearing, Executive Meeting of June 10th. Do I have a motion for approval for...
Sorry, was there a vote on the...
Well, we'll take a vote.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it, what do we have here?
Seven.
Seven? Seven. Meeting minutes from public hearing, Executive Meeting of June 10th of 2024. I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it, seven. Okay. Status sheet, do we have any?
No status sheet.
Committee reports, nominating committee.
Okay. We, the nominating committee met at 5:45 tonight, and we would like to submit a slate of officers to serve for the remainder of 2024. Keith Taylor as Chair, Lou Cunningham as Vice Chair, and Gary Elliott as Secretary.
Do we have any motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Discussion.
Do we have, okay, we have some discussion?
Yeah. No, I, no discussion, it's just that the bylaws allowed for other nominations, so I wanted to make sure...
Do we have any other nominations? All right. No nominations, and all those in favor of the nominees? Signify aye by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it, and it looks like Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Elliott, congratulations. You are the new officers here.
Thank you. Mr. Elliott, we will have a new seating position for you. You will be closer to the center now as the secretary, so we'll start that next week.
Do I get a protective screener?
We'll work on it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Bylaws Committee, do we have a report from the Bylaws Committee?
Yes, the Bylaws Committee met this evening at 5:45 to discuss proposed changes to the bylaws. We, the members reviewed the proposed bylaws from St. Louis County, and we are encouraging the other members to review those proposed changes and come to the next meeting in August and discuss any comments or questions, and then we will probably make a motion for approval of the bylaws if there's no other comments.
In August at our Executive Meeting?
At our August Executive Meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Ordnance Review Committee, no report. Committee of the whole, no report. Apprehensive Planning Committee, no report. New business, consideration of petitions from the public hearings. First one is PC 17 and 18-24, Impact Agapi Ministries.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you is PC 17, 24, and 18, 24, Impact Agapi Ministries. The request is for a change in zoning from R3 Residence District to R5 Residence District and the conditional use permit in the R5 Residence District on a 7.53 acre tract on the west side of Bell Fountain Road, opposite Rio Avenue. The proposed use is for a group living facility for religious, educational, or charitable purposes. As you can see from the context map, the site is located in North County, and the site is outlined in red on the aerial. Once again, the site is outlined in red on this larger aerial. The proposal is for redevelopment of a former rectory building. The request is for a change in zoning from the R3 Residence District to the R5 Residence District and a conditional use permit procedure in the R5 Residence District. The Department would like to note that this request is necessary because the R5 Residence District is the least intensive R Residence District that permits group living facilities for religious, educational, or charitable purposes via conditional use permit procedure. And the R5 Residence District regulations do permit churches by right, and for this specific facility is for a sober living facility. The preliminary site development plan shown at public hearing demonstrates few site improvements. The petitioner would maintain the primary building for the site, which is a church, and the accessory building would be repurposed as a sober living facility. That's that former rectory building. The site plan does demonstrate expansion of ADA accessible parking units. The Department's recommending approval of the change in zoning from the R3 to the R5 Residence District. The Department finds that continued residential zoning at the location is appropriate and maintains that a change in zoning is required to facilitate the conditional use permit procedure for this request. The Department also recommends approval of the conditional use permit procedure, finds that the request is compatible with existing permitted uses along Redmond Road and Bell Fountain Road, notes that the proposed use would occupy an accessory building along Bell Fountain Road that could otherwise remain vacant, notes that the sober living facility could benefit residents struggling with addictions, finds that this proposal meets the criteria for the conditional use permit procedure, but does determine that future development may not... And thus, the Department recommends that a change in occupant would require a new public hearing. And the, this recommendation for approval will incorporate recommendations shown on the following slide. So, in addition, as a part of this recommendation for approval, the Department recommends increased landscaping north of the proposed sober living facility to screen the facility from nearby institutional and residential land uses. Specifically recommends three trees and 10 shrubs where that green shape is, that cloud. And at this time, I would request a motion.
Heard a recommendation and a request and a motion. Do we have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Am I saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Eyes have that. The next petition is PC 20-24, Dharmash Sharma.
I am not that tall, so we're gonna bring that down a little bit. Good evening, Commissioners. PC 20-24, Dharmash Sharma, is a request for a conditional use permit in the C2 Shopping District and Floodplain C2 Shopping District for the proposed use of a packaged liquor store, freestanding ATM, and veterinary clinic on a tract size of 6.58 acres, located on the east side of Telegraph Road, approximately 350 feet north of West Pottle Avenue. As you may recall from the public hearing, this site is located in South County, and as you can see from the aerial on your right, the site is outlined in red. Here is a larger aerial of the site showing, again outlined in red, but the commercial frontage of Telegraph Road with residential behind. So, this is a request for a conditional use permit in the C2 Shopping District with the Floodplain C2 Shopping District to permit a packaged liquor store within 1,000 feet of another packaged liquor store. Currently on the site, there is already a conditional use permit that permits the veterinary clinic and the freestanding ATM. However, conditional use permit, there can only be one on a tract of land, so that is why it is coming back with the request for the packaged liquor store, the veterinary clinic, and the already existing freestanding ATM. This site was the subject of three previous petitions because of the conditional use permit, one for the ATM and one for the veterinary clinic. So this is the preliminary site development plan. Currently, the packaged liquor store exists in the building with the star on it, and they are proposing to move into the building that I have outlined with the black cloud. So they will just be doing mainly interior work. Staff is recommending approval as the conditional use permit procedure is the appropriate mechanism for developing the proposed use as well as the previously approved conditional uses. Telegraph Road is a highly commercial corridor characterized by a wide range of retail services and office uses, and this portion of Telegraph Road is in proximity to Interstate 255. So it is reasonable for a corridor to accommodate two packaged liquor stores within close proximity. Finally, the proposed liquor store has been operating in the retail center since 2013 without a conditional use permit, and the operation is outgrowing its current space. Thus, this would also bring them into conformance. We also have a few recommendations for their site development plan, including prohibiting window signs and temporary parking lot signage, including flags, banners, inflatables, and signs attached to parking lot signs or fences at the site. Also, staff does recommend the removal of the former Dairy Queen freestanding sign along Telegraph Road as this site does have a combined sign for all the tenants on the space, and then they would be able to use a wall sign on the front of their store per the C2 Shopping District requirements. So at this time, I would ask for a motion.
You heard the recommendation of the staff, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions, discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it, 7-0. Next petition is 22 and 23-24, Kittle Property Group, Inc.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. This is PC 22 and 23-24, Kittle Property Group, Inc. This is a request for a change in zoning from R5 Residence District to R6 Residence District and a request for a planned environment unit procedure in R6 to permit multifamily residences and associated amenities. This is a 12.31 acre site in the southeastern quadrant of North Hanley Road and University Place Drive. Please. Oh, I skipped too fast. Okay. As you can see on this map, the site is in North County, and on the aerial is bounded in red. No, why is it doing this? Okay, directly north of the site is the North Hanley MetroLink Station, and north and east of that is the Express Scripps Campus in Umsul. Oh, this is gonna happen for every single one, isn't it? I don't know. The petitioner is requesting a change in zoning from R5 to R6 Residence District with a planned environment unit in R6. A PEU is appropriate for sites with challenging topography or those which have proposed shared structures and amenities. This site was zoned R5 Residence District in 1965 and was subsequently developed with single-family detached homes. At present, the majority of structures on the site are vacant and fallen into disrepair. And the interior of the area of the site is undeveloped wooded. And finally, the Department recommends consideration of this proposal in conjunction with PC 16-24, University Crossing, which Commissioners heard on May 13th, 2024. The preliminary site development plan shown at public hearing depicts five three-story multifamily buildings with 192 total units, five detached garages, a clubhouse, and pool, and other amenities. Of note, the proposal also features a very large wet retention basin onsite and associated regrading. Access to this development would be from one curb cut each on North Hanley and University Place Drive. All right, preliminary architectural elevations show a common contemporary multifamily building aesthetic with one story of brick masonry and two stories of fiber cement. The Department is recommending approval of change in zoning. Multifamily development is appropriate for the site and desirable to provide a greater variety of housing types for residents. This development would also be an appropriate transition between high-intensity uses at the MetroLink and residences to the south and west. The Department is also recommending approval of the PEU procedure as it is appropriate for the topography and proposed structures on the preliminary site development plan. As noted at public hearing, the site is bowl-like and has hilly terrain, which requires creative design. Finally, the PEU procedure will also allow the Commission to recommend further conditions of development regarding the property, which will be outlined in the following slides. It just doesn't like me. The Department is recommending several revisions to the site development plan and architectural elevation seen at public hearing. So first, no landscaping plan was submitted, but the Department is recommending extensive landscaping overall. As recommended by the Carsonville Land Use and Redevelopment Study, new developments in this area should have landscape buffers around the perimeter in lieu of site-proof fencing. Additionally, the Department recommends that trees should be installed along internal walkways and landscape islands to provide shade for pedestrians on their way to amenities. The Department will note that some of the perimeter and interior of the site has extremely steep slopes and may not be appropriate for tree installation. Thus, in these areas, native shrubs and flowers should be cultivated instead of turf grass. Those are the pink areas on this. Additionally, there is a multi-acre detention pond, which may or may not eventually contain fish. Thus, a pedestrian walkway to this pond could give residents access to another amenity on the site. And as noted during public hearing, there are some road and safety concerns. The Department is recommending coordination with the County Department of Transportation for road improvements, access, and curb installation where necessary. And finally, the Department recommends that the developer coordinates the aesthetics with the development to the north. So pictured here is the proposed architectural elevations for University Crossing. So ideally, this development would also feature decorative elements and more brick or stone on the exterior, so to ensure that the area remains harmonious. At this time, I would like to request a motion.
Heard the recommendation, staff, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sure we have questions or discussion.
Question. So, has the developer been notified that they need to increase more masonry? Have all these recommendations been discussed with them?
Not yet.
Not yet.
So, after the planning commission makes a decision, if they choose to approve this recommendation, then we'll forward these conditions to the developer so that they can review it.
Because I just know, you know, telling them they need to add more stone and brick, that's just increased cost, so just wondering, had this been discussed with them?
So procedurally, how the Department typically review or can coordinate these sorts of review processes is that in, in response to the application, to public hearing, to the comments that we receive from the public and from other departments, we come up with the staff report, many times does include recommendations that we have not yet spoken to the developer on. Because some of them could be negotiated, but some... Because some of them could be negotiated, but some of them also are staff find are, you know, are pretty, you know, hard set. I'm not necessarily this case, just in general. So then what happens is that subsequent to this meeting, if this commission were to accept the staff's recommendation, we would then go back to the developer and start negotiating and discussing with them the conditions that the commission has adopted as part of their vote. It is if the developer, that's when you sometimes, I think it was last time that we saw that sometimes the developer does not necessarily agree with them, so they'll come back in writing and between now and sending this off to the council. You know, we'll present the developer's concerns, issues. Sometimes we'll say, yes, we think that's reasonable, we concur, and we modify the document to be reflective of that. Sometimes we find that what they, their request is unreasonable. Bring it back to you all as your letter of recommendation to review those, if there's any changes inside of it, and then forward it on to the council as the commission deems appropriate. So that's just the general process of how we do it.
And then for this specific one, they currently are showing 20% brick per side, and we're recommending 25%.
And are you recommending a change on the roof line? Do you want them to go with the flat roof?
Not necessarily, not necessarily, because that's a big, that's a big design change. So not necessarily. The intent being is to ensure that the aesthetics are, again, like Ms. Jing was saying, is that there's harmony in the development, especially because they're gonna be coming in one right after the other, about which we think is really, really beneficial and really, really great to this corner. So, we wholeheartedly support both of these proposals. We just find that there could be some additional architectural embellishments on the Kittle property that could make it a long-term, even better asset to the community.
Any other discussion?
Yes. What's the security situation on the property? As far as we know, like cameras, onsite security staff?
So do you want to discuss that, Ms. Jing, or?
One of the-
No, that's okay. Ms. Wilson?
Yeah, so at public hearing, they, first, they are not proposing a fence around the entire property right now, so you would be able to walk in and out. But they did mention that they have security, you know, staff onsite at all times. They also indicated that they have, essentially, I think it's a license plate reader at the gates to, you know, make sure they know who's coming in and out. But that's, I think, the generalities of their, like, security system.
And correct me, Mel, if I'm wrong, is that they are applying for Lytech tax credits. And all Lytech tax credit projects must have a security plan as part of their, as part of a development plan, when they submit those to the state of Missouri. So, they do, they are looking at to ensure that the site is secure.
And they said it's the same security system that they use at all their properties.
Didn't they also say that they were gonna leave space to St. Louis County for a police substation?
That's across the street at University, that's across the street at University Square.
University Place.
Okay, I got it.
I know, it's because they're two, they're right next to each other, so it's easy to conflate the two developments. But they're, yes, it's two, which is great. It's two brand-new developments just immediately across the street from one another.
So what are, what's the extent of authority to require fencing, require onsite security for a certain duration?
So, the authority of the planning commission is typically limited to land use consideration. So fencing is within the purview of the planning commission to make a recommendation if it would like to see more fencing, less fencing, decorative fencing, security fencing. It has relatively wide latitude, as long as you can tie your recommendations to a, forgive me if I may be using the wrong legal term, like a rational reason why. You've got to base it in some sort of reason why you want it, not just because. There has to be an out, there has to be a ration, or sort of a reasonable outcome for why the planning commission would make any of its recommendations. But it is, fencing is completely within the purview. Security would not, the security of saying, you know, maybe having an arm that goes up or down, something like that is within the purview, can be cameras. But saying that you would require, say, have onsite security personnel is outside the authority of a planning commission to require as part of a, because really what you're doing is that this is, in essence, it's a mini version of the zoning ordinance, and we would never in the zoning ordinance require, you know, security people as part of a development. But you can require other land-based security types of amenities, you know.
Chris, do you want to add something to the?
Well, I don't know procedurally how that would work, because we have a motion on the floor, but yeah, my ultimate vote would be to approve this with the added addition of additional fencing around the site and cameras, so.
Well, then we just need to re-center motions.
But I mean, those would be my two added wishes to this proposal.
Does everybody agree to that?
I guess I have a question about it. Of course, I'm for security, but did the other, so we're talking about the southernmost.
Would you bring up a map?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're talking about the southernmost location now, right?
Yes, so this, this development in front of you on the screen is.
Does the location that was north of this on the?
Across the street, the University Crossing Development?
Yeah, did that have fencing?
It does, around the rear. So, because it's an L-shaped building, so the front doesn't have any fencing, because it's an L-shaped building, it doesn't, they don't, you wouldn't have any place to put fencing. That development does have some fencing around the rear to fence in some of the vehicles. So that site, that is the limits of the fencing on the one to the north. So, and just so you know, because we spoke with the developer, well, before it even came, as through the application process, we had a pre-development meeting with the applicant, because they had shown various iterations of the development, some of this development in front of you. And some of them did include a complete security fence around the entirety of the site. Staff had, and I, I will say aye, I had aesthetic concerns about how that can make the site look like it's completely walled off from the community. So I asked them to be more strategic in how they, where they put fencing to consider the type of fencing that they want to put in to be decorative, that, and that those security features that they do include, just to ensure that the site doesn't look like it's, like we're walling people in or keeping, or walling people out, that it's an integrated part into the community, as much as you can do with a multifamily development of this general, of this general type. Right now, it does have a significant amount of trees, and that is, and that is because there are, it is, there's some challenging topography at this site, which is why this middle of the, is undeveloped, largely undeveloped, is because there's, there's a lot of, there's some steep grades and whatnot going on at the site.
So, at the point right here, and I don't have a pointer, please. What's the grade level between the back of these houses, I don't know, the street, and this building, and this landscaping?
The homes on Link are above the petition site.
I'm sorry, say that again.
The homes to the south will be higher than the southern part of this development. The development is lower.
The family homes are higher.
Correct, the single-family homes are higher.
So there's this requirement for some landscaping between, so no fencing at all between those single-family homes?
In that area, there is also a retaining wall. So I believe the retaining wall is closest to the property line, so it would be retaining wall landscaping, the development's parking lot.
How tall is that retaining wall, do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Do we have the site develop, just the site development plan in the presentation?
I don't think so.
Because the site development plan would-
The areas that I've marked in pink are the ones that are relatively steep.
Yeah.
Well, if they're going to put a retaining wall in there, wouldn't they have to put a fence around that retaining wall?
Yes, if the retaining wall meets a certain height, there has to be, there has to be a fence on top of the retaining wall to ensure that individuals do not fall off of the retaining wall.
If it's within a certain distance of like a walking path.
Correct. Which that will be required no matter what, because that is, nothing else, that is a building code requirement.
Would you normally have, say, a fence between the residential homes outside the complex and the apartments?
It really just depends on the development. It can be, it can be appropriate, contextually, it can be appropriate either way, just dependent upon the situation. You know, in this situation, in attachment C of the, of the department's recommendation, what are the, do we have any recommendations, or can you read the recommendation for the fencing?
Yeah.
Or do you have it, Mel?
Mel, I think we'll have it. There is actually a condition that fencing for only, like, keeping people out is prohibited at the moment.
I just want to add for the record that, for those of the folks that are familiar with this community, that there's a very problem development across the street that I think anybody in-
Near 70 in Hanley?
Yes.
Yes, there's a multifamily, there's a multifamily development there that is, is known for many calls of service for, to our police.
Yes, so I want to see this area and this development be successful, and I share your concerns about fencing in that property. That being said, I want to make sure the folks that are gonna be residents in this community feel safe until that area really hits, hits its, hits its gear as far as being redeveloped. So, all the, you know, I guess I lean to your judgment of as far as aesthetics, and obviously, there's gonna be some parts you probably can't fence in, especially back here with the wooded area, but on the main streets on North Hanley, University Place, I want to see some type of fencing.
What's? What's the fencing guidelines? What's the zoning ordinance say for fencing on a street on a multifamily residential property? What's the height limit, or is there one?
Once you go beyond six feet, it becomes a structure, so you have to meet the setbacks once you, once you, once a fence exceeds six feet in height. So if it's, if the height of the fence is below six feet, it can be within the setbacks, because then it does not technically meet the definition of structure in county code. So, if this, and the six feet is a pretty standard, is a pretty standard height, particularly for security fences. So that's, this PEU ordinance gives the commission the ability, though, to condition fences pretty liberally, as long as we, as long as you tie it to, you know, a reasonable, a reasonable outcome. You know, so if it were the will of the commission to require, you know, certain amounts of fencing along Hanley and University Place, it could be required to be decorative. It could be required to be, and you know, and that can be, and if you simply use the word decorative, that can be extremely broad, right? Because you could say that it could be decorative, it needs to mimic iron rods to be a sort of decorative. You could say that it needs to have masonry pillars to make it look more, to break it up. These are all things that the commission could require. I would, I would strongly discourage the use of barbed wire.
I think, I, no, I agree. I think we just have to be careful with the fencing, and we can, we can discuss this at a later date, but you don't want to, you don't want to mess with the aesthetics too much. You don't want to be fenced in or caged in. You still want to have that freedom. I think we can reach our goal as long as we, as long as we agree that this is going to be a development that will lead to the type of environment that we want in this area. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, and so my comments are, I totally respect what you're saying, because I'm up and down Hanley Road there all the time. I know the apartment complex you're talking about across the street, and I just don't, for me, I don't see a six-foot-tall fence going on Hanley Road in front of this development, because it will seem like it's, to me, caging it in too much. And so maybe there's some other decorative ways where it's pillars and a three-foot-tall masonry wall with the concrete cap. I mean, maybe we need to see the design, I don't know, but I'm not, for me, as a plan commissioner, familiar with this particular area, I don't see a security fence going all the way around this property, especially not on Hanley Road.
There are a couple of actions that the commission could take this evening. The commission could hold consideration of this while staff this week goes back to the applicant and reviews some of the fencing considerations and whether we can get, like, visuals of what, of some of this for you all. Or you could recommend, you could vote to recommend approval contingent upon staff coming back next week with those, I mean, it's, which is six of one, six of one half dozen of the other, right? Because I, because what I'm hearing, if I'm hearing correctly, is that the commission is largely, overall, seems supportive of the use and the overall site design. It's just about a couple of these design issues that we want to ensure are appropriate and right. So, to me, it's if the commission would like to hold this, especially because we meet in a week at executive session, since we wouldn't need to talk about the real meat of the petition, we could zero in really quickly on the fencing. I will tell you that next Monday, we do, it's a full public hearing. We, it will be a long, I expect it'll be a somewhat long evening, so we will want executive session to be able to focus in on the, on the issues that are truly important to the commission, so that we don't extend Monday night's evening discussing other items. So if the commission would like to vote to approve tonight contingent upon the fencing, we can do that.
Could you also talk to them about their security plans in general?
Yes, absolutely.
Including the fencing?
Sure.
Cameras.
Chris, one question regarding the fence. Is there anything less than a six-foot wrought iron-looking fence would alleviate your concerns?
Oh, yeah.
With a three-foot fence still?
Just something to break the property up from a lot of the foot traffic that is emanating from that apartment complex and from the MetroLink and some of the other activities, just something to break up North Hanley and University Place. It doesn't have to be a privacy fence or a six-foot black wrought iron fence. It could take various forms, as long as we, as long as we get there.
I think that the shorter a fence is, it defeats the purpose of having a fence. If you can step over it, why have a fence?
But it could be something with, like, a brick-stone wall that's three foot tall with some decorative landscaping on top of it and corners.
When you start talking masonry, how many lineal feet? That gets very expensive when you call a bricklayer in, they start laying brick or block or stone. I, I've seen some pretty neat iron fences with brick or stone pillars, and they come in all ranges, all different shapes. Wildwood's got one that encompasses, I mean, it goes on for probably a mile down Manchester Road, and it's all along the walking trail. It keeps people from wandering into the woods, and, you know, the woods are all, I mean, it's real thick vegetation in there. I don't know what this vegetation's like, but the other idea is if, where it says you got a break because of the landscaping, okay, but what does that break do as far as somebody, and I'm maybe going off the deep end here, if somebody ventures in through the woods and comes in, how do you stop that? Yeah, I don't know if you're gonna be able to stop that from the woods. Well, if you had a fence up, it'd be a step in the right direction. I mean, a tree, they're just gonna run from tree to tree.
Sounds like more discussion maybe.
I think so.
Let's get-
So can I make-
Pictures of fences?
Okay.
Heights? You know, Gary, gotta go, everybody has very valid points, good things that we're talking about here. But I, this is just my two cents, is that sometimes, you know, we're saying we're trying to make this like a prison. However, when you go into, you know, a gated community, there is a fence around the whole place, in a gated community where it's, you know, private, and I know this isn't private, but if, you know, you take a nice-looking wrought iron fence, which isn't wrought iron, it's the steel.
Right.
And put those columns in periodically through there to dress the place up, that's only gonna make it look nicer. Is that cost? You might take it back to this developer-
You might take it back to this developer and he's going to say, no, we're not going to do that. But.
Also, if we could get some real photos of the topography instead of just like an aerial view, where are the trees? How, what's the vegetation look like there now? I don't want to see the artist rendering of what the new place is going to look like.
Can you zoom, zoom that in?
Are those, the, the forested part is going to be removed, right? With the water retention?
By and large, so it would be, it would be regraded and then they would be replanted with new plantings, which I believe one of the conditions in Attachment C is that it has to be replanted with Missouri native planting.
Right.
To, you know, to, to bring back a native plant as much as possible.
Okay. Well, I need to take the, uh, the motions and have them resend. Or, who made the first motion?
I have Mr. Elliott making the motion and Mr. Fagan is the second.
Would you like to resend your motion?
Yeah, I'll change my motion and make it contingent upon finding satisfying fencing and security measures.
Okay, would second resend their motion as well.
So does this mean that we, we are only going to pass it if they do put up a fence?
We're just holding it. We're going to, we're going to hold.
It means we've, we're going to approve everything except the security, is that right?
And, and we're holding it because we were supposed to vote on it. Yes.
And staff, at one week from tonight, um, at your executive session, we will present to you what we, what our findings are from the, from the applicant.
If I could just more, one more, I guess, comment is as we're trying to create more development in this area, right? Is that sending the right message of now we're going to have a bunch of little tiny gated communities out there? That, that's my only, you know, two cents with, but yes, I will resend it to table so we can continue discussions.
Did anybody have any other discussion on that, or Vetta? Okay, so Gary made a, a new motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have that. Seven, zero. Full business.
Nope, you know the area.
Nothing for, oh, not right.
Good evening, um, this is PC 11185 Mills Properties, which is a C8 planned commercial district. It governs 10 acres on the northeast side of Limburg Boulevard and southeast of, uh, LeMay Ferry Road. This is a correspondence item. They are requesting to remove the setback requirement for the curb cut from Adworth Drive. This site is in South County and you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. From the larger aerial, you can see the surrounding commercial development on Limburg and LeMay Ferry Road and the residential development to the northeast. PC 11185 Mills Property was a request for a change of zoning from R7 and C8 to C8 and amended C8 to develop a retail shopping center and theater. The original preliminary site development plan showed three curb cuts on Adworth Drive, but one curb cut was removed from subsequent submissions following planning commission concern and the establishment of a cross access and cross parking agreement with the neighboring parcel. And the ordinance has been amended several times since its original adoption. The current request before the planning commission is to remove the setback requirement for the curb cuts from Adworth Drive. The commission will recall seeing this request at, um, their meeting a few weeks ago. Subsequent to that meeting, the petitioner stated that, um, we were not provided the most current information and has submitted a new request. So the commission, uh, I'm sorry, the petitioner submitted this revised plan, which shows a curb cut on Adworth Drive at the northeastern corner of the site. Currently, the ordinance requires a 380 foot setback from that northeast property line. So that requirement would preclude them from having a curb cut in this location. So, um, this is that site plan, just a little bit larger. The petitioner has stated that there would be a gate at this entrance and it would restrict access to this curb cut, um, just to the employees of the, the office within this, um, multi-tenant retail building. They're also showing a sidewalk extension that would connect to the proposed sidewalk along Adworth Drive that's associated with the proposed Adworth Senior Living, um, facility. The planning department is continuing to recommend denial of this request. We find that it's inappropriate to add commercial traffic onto a residential street, especially, uh, given that the commercial access to this development is oriented toward Limburg Boulevard and Barracks View Road and that this was a concern when this development was originally proposed. The cross access easement agreement that does exist was established to address this very situation. This proposed curb cut continues to disrupt a pedestrian crossing and the department reached out to County Department of Transportation and Public Works, who would not support this curb cut. So at this time, I would like to request a motion.
Heard the recommendation, do we have a motion?
Make a motion for denial.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it, seven, zero.
So our next correspondence item will be presented to you by one of our interns. So I'd like Susanna to please introduce herself when she gets up there and just tell a little bit about, uh, what brought you here. Thank you.
Hello, commissioners. Like Mel said, I am Susanna Nordman. I am one of the interns this summer and I just graduated from the University of Missouri Columbia with a geography degree and a political science degree. All that being said.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it. This is PC 4319 Delmar Gardens of Merrimack Valley, Inc. The request is for an extension of time on CUP number 969. The tract size is 16.09 acres located on the northwest side of Graboy Road, approximately 375 feet southwest of Graboy Place and bordered to the south by Jefferson County. The proposed use is a nursing home and group home for the elderly. As you can see on the aerial view, the, uh, the site is outlined in red and like we said, the, uh, this is in way south county bordered by Jefferson County. There was a site plan submitted in April of 2022, but has not yet been approved. And for a bit of context with the site, they applied for a CUP 969 on July 7th, 2020. Given the, um, complications with the pandemic and nursing homes and other delays, they were not able to complete commencement of substantial work or development as necessitated of section three of CUP number 969, two years to start, uh, substantial work. And since that did not happen, they applied for a time extension in August of 2022 and was granted extension until July 7th, 2024. The, uh, the requister gave the reasoning that there was rising costs in construction and building materials and were also unable to complete substantial work during this time, but did, uh, get a boundary adjustment plat approved in December of 2022. So given all this, they are applying for a second time extension that would, if granted, would give, um, time until July 7th of 2026 to complete substantial work. The department is recommending approval for the request. The current developer has indicated motivation to revisit the preliminary site development plan and revise it as needed and begin construction. At this time, I would like to request a motion.
You've heard the recommendation. Do we have a motion of, or approval?
Recommendation for approval for the extension?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you very much.
Seven, zero.
Okay, good evening. Uh, our next item is a response to a council order, Council Resolution 7283. For background, this relates to the recent petition that the council heard, PC 05 and 0624, Valley Park 2 East LLC. This is the bi-jurisdictional development on Valley Park Road adjacent to the city of Valley Park. The commission will recall, uh, recommending approval of the request, the request to change in zoning and the PEU procedure. Uh, this recommendation was forwarded to the county council who ultimately passed the change in zoning via ordinance and voted to deny the PEU ordinance. When their, uh, when the, the bill was sent to the county executive for the ordinance to finalize the rezoning, the county executive vetoed that ordinance. That veto has since been sitting on the council's agenda under unfinished business. But subsequently, the council did adopt this resolution directing the planning commission to hold a public hearing to reconsider a PEU on this tract. So essentially what this would do would be, uh, we would hold a new public hearing to consider the PEU similar to the public hearing we had in, you know, earlier this year. Um, and the commission would make a recommendation similarly. So the process right now, we have prepared a resolution of, of a planning commission resolution. If you adopt that resolution, you will hear this petition next week on July 8th at that public hearing. So we are recommending approval that you do adopt the resolution.
So can you explain that? So the, um, what we approved was sent to the council. We, we sent two things to the council and they approved one of them?
Right, the change in zoning was one bill and the PEU would have been a second ordinance.
And what would that have provided, the PEU?
So the PEU is, um, similar to the C8 planned commercial district and the M3 planned industrial district, which result in a site-specific ordinance that governs that development. But the PEU is a procedure that one does in the residential district. So it's more of an overlay, but also results in a site-specific ordinance. And in their recommendation of staff and ultimately what the commission forwarded is we found that the development, the multifamily development on Valley Park Road was not appropriate without a PEU. So that was part of our recommendation. And since they've now been split up, it's sort of in limbo. But to, uh, you know, and I can't speak to the council's motivations, but they adopted this resolution asking for the PEU to be reconsidered. I don't know if you have anything to add, Jacob?
Uh, no, not really. I mean, I think you have laid it out, um, fairly succinctly, uh, Mel. But yes, the, um, when these went through to council, typically, um, they, they go together. They're a pair. When you do a change to the zoning map with this PEU procedure, your recommendation was that they go together. And in this specific case, um, they, they fell apart for various reasons. And, and because of that, the county executive vetoed, uh, the map change to the zoning. So, um, this is, the council has then therefore asked, please reconsider that PEU. So then what would happen is that say this commission reconsidered that, um, sent something back to council, they would kind of be rejoined back together, uh, to, to, for council to make its determination as to how it would like to proceed at that point.
Question, if we do not go along with this approval, right? Does that kill the project?
I don't, I, well, what I would say is just from what happens tonight is that then, one way or another, this commission has to respond to the council. So the, if the commission.
I'm trying to think of if there are some shalls or some musts.
That's what I'm wondering.
If the zoning ordinance says that the commission shall hold this public hearing based on the commission's, excuse me, based on the council's resolution, then you have to adopt it. But I can certainly look.
Right, so I, that, because that's what I'm suddenly, and I apologize, is that I do believe it says shall, at which point, um, you can then make a recommendation that is contrary to what you had recommended before. But it gives you the opportunity to reconsider the, to reconsider the option.
What has changed? Why would we want, why wouldn't we want the PEU overlay? Why would we want to throw that away?
I, I, you know, I, staff, we will be making a presentation at public hearing next week on this issue because you do, because as part of the resolution, um, you, you shall hold a public hearing, uh, at which point we would discuss.
Okay, but what if we come back with the same deal and say, look, we still think this needs to be done?
Then you send, then that would be your recommendation. It would be forwarded on to the county council, um, for them. Yes, for them, so then the items.
I believe that's what they're looking for.
I believe they're wanting us to be the bad guys.
I don't want to, I, I don't want to.
I said it, I don't deny that. Recommendation to approve the resolution.
Do we have a motion on that?
This is a, a motion to hold a public hearing about a PEU?
Essentially a motion to approve, to adopt this resolution. And what the resolution says is that the commission would hold a public hearing.
We would redo the whole thing. Okay, I make a motion, we redo it.
I'll second that.
Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, seven, zero.
And then our last item, uh, regards PC 2124 TriStar Real Estate Acquisitions LLC. The commission may recall, um, having the public hearing for the proposed, uh, mixed-use development district on Olive Road here. They have, or, excuse me, this was, this one was going to be, was going to be on public hearing? Now I've confused myself.
I'm sorry, isn't this a request for withdrawal without prejudice?
This already did go to public hearing.
Yes, this is, we've seen it twice.
That's right. Sorry, I'm getting confused with what's in my inbox and what's actually in reality. So you did hear this petition at public hearing, but the developer is working on a revised plan that would not align with what they showed the commission at public hearing. So they are requesting withdrawal without prejudice so they can return with a different concept. Yes, and.
Let us hope that third time is a charm.
Third time, fourth time, fifth time, there have been many, many petitions on this site, but this is the Creve Court area.
Yes, it's immediately adjacent to Creve Court.
So without prejudice means this.
If the commission had prejudice, they would have to wait a year to come back. Without prejudice allows them to return with the same request or a different request at their, at their convenience.
So, um, make a motion to withdraw, allow them to withdraw without prejudice.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, seven, zero. No site plans? No site plans? And for the good of the order, it's St. Louis County 2050 update. Hi, Paul.
I'm doing great, how are you? I'll be brief this evening. I was out last week when most of the excitement happened. We did have the second steering committee meeting. I believe some of you probably maybe attended. So that went well. While our consultant was in town, um, we began sort of the transition from, um, talking and learning and listening and, and our, moving into, um, our scenario planning phase, pathway to future. And so we're excited about that. We'll be, um, keeping you all informed and involved. My understanding is there will be a conference of planning committee of the planning commission, that will be heavily involved in, uh, the process moving forward. And then the other update I had is, um, I guess twice now, myself and some other, um, staff from, from the county have met with the city of St. Louis to discuss, um, their strategic land use plan update, uh, which is a similar process to what we're doing, to try and coordinate, align, see where common goals, um, and objectives might exist between both of our processes and how we can support each other, um, in doing that. That's all I got for you today. Happy to take any questions.
Or if any of the commissioners who were at the steering committee meeting, anything they want to share. Sandy, or Vetta, Keith and Todd were all there.
I thought it was a really good meeting. I was glad to see. I was glad to see so many community stakeholders participating.
How many people were there?
Oh, man.
Twenty-something?
Yeah.
I think you probably had more than expected.
Yeah, there were, I mean.
You had to pull out more chairs.
That's true. Right, right.
You know, and it was great. Dr. Page, he was there. He's very invested in this process. So he made time to come and sort of just mingle with folks before the meeting really got kicked off. I thought the conversation was great, so.
Yeah, the workshop that they had, I thought was interesting. A lot of participation. Everybody had, each stable had pretty good reports that they put together.
The next steering committee meeting will be, I believe it's the fourth Thursday in August, and that is where the consultant, we are working, starting through the scenario planning process. So we're putting together sort of possible ideas of how the county could look over time. And then we take those and test various policies and what that could look like. So in August, when the steering committee comes together again, we will be working through some of those with them, having our identified various scenarios and sort of showing the steering committee what some of those findings are. So we are deeply, we're really moving through. We're now to the stuff that's really difficult but really exciting as well and really fun, you know, as planners to really consider it. So anything else, Paul?
I don't think so.
All right.
I would say with that steering committee meeting last week, one of the topics, because I was sitting at this table, was housing. Affordable housing was a really big discussion. How do we get more affordable housing into the region? Both rental and homeownership.
And that's absolutely one of the core findings from our existing conditions report is that while we, when we compare ourselves nationally, the region seems more affordable than most. But when you get into ourselves as a market, we're extracting more value out of renters than we're extracting out of homeowners, which means that the very people that we want to transition to homeownership, we're making it farther and farther out of their reach. So what are ways that government can help short-circuit that and make housing more affordable for everyone? I think there's a lot of really great discussion to come from that topic and a whole host of other things.
It was. Todd, you got anything to add?
It was interesting to see things that I had not thought of, right? Coming in there with, like I said, the different groups to talk about, you know, what's important to them and their people. So I enjoyed it.
That's good. Very good. Thanks for all your hard work there, Paul and the whole staff. It was.
And one thing I'd like to say is that we have three, I know we've said this before, we've got three interns in the department this summer. They're all three excellence. We've got Kamaria, Dorian, and Susanna. Yeah, Susanna presented to you tonight. The department's really lucky to have the three of you. Thank you so much for spending your summer with St. Louis County Planning. We really appreciate it. We have the three of them working on a big project around impact fees and what that could look like in the future. So they're doing some, they're doing some good research as well as getting some good experience. And so thank you also for being so welcoming to the interns when they present to you all.
Just a question. Is our next public hearing just coming?
Yes, one week.
So the eighth?
The eighth.
A week from now, minus 15 minutes, we're back here for public hearing. And as Jacob said, it's kind of a long one. It's full.
Yes.
Per the commission's bylaws, it's chalk, it's as full as it gets.
It gets, it's as full as it gets, so please do.
Consider that when you read those bylaws.
Bring a cup of coffee. Hopefully it won't be, hopefully it won't be terribly long.
But we do have a. A little earlier, though, that we have, did we have something we were going to discuss?
Well, if the commission would like, we could schedule the executive session to begin before the public hearing. We could have the executive session at 6:30.
Would you prefer that to?
Instead of after.
Instead of after?
Everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. We'll set it up that way, but then we'll confirm via email as well.
Okay.
As long as we get the bylaws ahead of time.
Yes.
Well, you, well, we have, you guys have the bylaws.
We have the bylaws, but we're gonna.
But I'll send them out again just to.
Yes.
The ice ones?
Yes, as part of it, we'll send.
I'll make sure I get those.
Yes, we'll make sure that all eight of you have the copy of the current version as well as the staff drafted version from two years ago for you to mark up and make amendments to.
So are you gonna get back with us on this? The one that we were just talking about or?
That's correct. The Kittle property.
The Kittle property. We will discuss that executive session on next week.
We talked about it a long time. Maybe that's why. Apartments. Okay. With that, I move for adjournment. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned until next week, executive meeting at 6:30 and our public hearing at 7:00.